Twenty-two dash zero four to order. Cindy, roll call please.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Coke?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
Want to welcome everyone that is in the audience this evening. If you are here for an item on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that agenda item to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council, and that will be coming up here shortly. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's see. Virginia, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? That's fine.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
One item to change on the agenda this evening would be item five W, and we're going to move that from the consent agenda to the non-consent agenda. That's related to the new terminal for the Des Moines International Airport.
Counsel, any other changes? That amendment, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke? Yes.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is the Public Communications, and we have one scheduled public communication this evening, and that is a proclamation proclaiming February 28th through March 4th as National Invasive Species Awareness Week in the city of Johnston. And I'll read the proclamation, and I will present it to Virginia Solberg. Proclamation reads, title is National Invasive Species Awareness Week, February 28th through March 4th. Whereas invasive aquatic riparian and terrestrial species influence the productivity, value, and management of a broad range of land and water resources in Johnston, Iowa; and whereas the cost to prevent, monitor, and control invasive species combined with the cost to crop damage, fisheries, forests, and other resources costs the U.S. $120 billion annually; and whereas after habitat destruction invasive species are the second greatest threat to biodiversity; and whereas invasive species within the city of Johnston, including garlic mustard, bush honeysuckle, and multiflora rose, threatens the survival of native plants and animals, and interferes with the ecosystem functions by changing processes such as fire, nutrient flow, and flooding; and whereas invasive species are a significant threat to almost half of all native species currently listed as federally endangered; and whereas invasive species impair infrastructure and impede transportation, water delivery systems, and energy production; and whereas invasive species impede industry, threaten agriculture, obstruct outdoor recreation, endanger human health, and become increasingly harder to control due to rapid global commercialization and human travel. Now therefore, I, Paula Diernefeld, Mayor of the city of Johnston, Iowa, do hereby proclaim February 28th through March 4th, 2022, as National Invasive Species Awareness Week. I encourage residents to participate in National Invasive Species Awareness Week to promote knowledge and understanding of the threats posed by invasive species. And Virginia, will you come up and receive the proclamation? Let me sign this. And when do you usually do that?
Well, garlic mustard, it depends on when it flowers, because then you can spot it easily. With honeysuckle, you can do it most easily. Spot in the spring and the fall.
So how would we know when you're doing that?
Oh, I think through the park board, we have, yeah, and through our communications people.
So if we go out and... The city website, social media, you know, Janet will post some things that we all say are coming up, and we all plan to help you.
That'd be great. Wonderful.
Watch the website and the Facebook, and we'll know when it's time. Thank you, Virginia. Okay, that was the only item under Public Communications. We are still under Public Communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Cindy, do we have anybody online? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. We have several public hearings scheduled this evening. We'll start out with item four A, to conduct a public hearing for the 2022-2023 Proposed Property Tax Levy and Consider Resolution Number 22-43, City of Johnston, Iowa, approval of the 2022-2023 maximum property tax dollar, thirteen million, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. We'll open this public hearing at 7:12. Teresa?
Erin, counsel. I believe this is the third year we've had this new requirement in the state code that requires a city council to hold a public hearing for our proposed city maximum property tax dollar for our levies, for any levy, or for specific levies that we may have. And in our particular case, it applies to our general levy and our employee benefit levy, and those are the only two levies that this hearing reflects or takes notice with. And because of that, there is a small 0.97% increase in the amount of property tax dollars we'll be taking in from this year to last year in that particular area, which is a five cent increase in our property tax levy. But due to rollback and valuations, that's why the percentage is so low. So we were required to publish this. We were required to place it on all our social media places and posts, and we have done so. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I did have a memo with a copy of the hearing and the resolution.
Counsel, have any questions for Teresa? I don't see any questions, Teresa.
Sorry, quick question. Did you say five cents per thousand?
Right.
Okay.
This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing then at 7:14. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-43?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item four B, conduct a public hearing on the matter of adoption plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Merle Hay Road and Johnston Drive improvements project, and consider Resolution Number 22-51, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. Consider construction costs, Resolution 22-52, making award of construction contract, and Resolution 22-53, approving contract and bond. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:15. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. On February 2nd, the city received bids for the Johnston Drive and Merle Hay Road improvements. We had two bidders on the project. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was six million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. The low bid received was six million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, and thirty-four dollars and five cents. The certified bid tab does show that Corral Contractor was the low bidder, but approximately about 6% over the engineer's estimate. However, staff and the engineer would recommend approval of the contract and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Matt, any idea why it was 6% over the engineer's estimate?
Yeah, when we reviewed the bids, a large portion of that cost difference appears to be in getting sanitary sewer across Merle Hay Road from the east side to the west side and maintaining traffic along Merle Hay while we're doing that construction. So there was some cost in that challenging part of it upfront, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Matt, can you tell us what the timeframe of the construction is, anticipated timeframe?
Well, once we get the, if we award the contract tonight, we'll get a pre-construction meeting with the contractors, but they'll be looking to get started right away this spring, and then construction will run through spring of, late spring of 2023. The majority of the road improvements and the infrastructure will be done this year. We may have some trail connections and some restoration that'll go into early next year.
And you said that Merle Hay Road would stay open, a portion of it, north and south the whole time?
Correct. We may have it down to one lane as we get across through there with our sanitary sewer, but the goal is to keep traffic through there. We've also got built into the contract nighttime paving for the asphalt overlay as we go through there, too.
One thing that I've been concerned about in the past with these major projects is that when we take away the public sidewalk. So I'm hoping that you will work with the contractor to provide at least sidewalk connections north and south along one side or the other of Merle Hay Road during the length of the project.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that. I know we're reconstructing, well, we're going to reconstruct trail along both the side of Merle Hay from Johnston Drive north to 55th, and then there will be a short segment of trail in front of the Sonic property and the old Quiklube property as well. So we'll work with the contractor to hopefully keep one of those open while we construct one, and then kind of maybe flop over and do the other one.
I would really appreciate if we could continue that, because I believe our pedestrian sidewalks are just as important as our roads. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions for Matt? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Cindy, anyone online?
No, ma'am.
Seeing none, we will close this public hearing then at 7:18. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-51?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-52?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-53?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion, or motion passed. Moving on to item four C, conduct a public hearing and consider approval of Resolution Number 22-49, a resolution releasing and vacating a sanitary sewer easement on a tract of land located in the southeast one quarter, one quarter of Section 12, Township 79, Range 25, west of the fifth principal meridian, now located in and forming a part of the city of Johnston, Polk County, Iowa. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:20.
The city has a public sanitary sewer easement that runs approximately from the old Terra Lake to Merle Hay Road, and that section of sanitary sewer is no longer needed. It's not currently in use. The city does have plans in the future to construct a trail connection from the Beaver Creek Trail, Beaver Creek Trail, over to Merle Hay Road in approximately that same location, and it would be necessary to abandon that easement at this time. So we have to go through the public process to abandon the easement. If you have questions for me, I can answer those now.
Counsel, have questions for Erin?
Can you explain to me what you mean by abandonment? Are we not using that? What does that mean?
We no longer need sanitary sewer in that location, but we cannot construct a trail over that easement area. So it's necessary to go through the steps to vacate and abandon the easement. Where there's, this easement is filed in the Polk County Book of Records.
Okay.
And this process abandons and vacates that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Erin? This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? Seeing none. Cindy, do we have anybody online? We will close the public hearing then at 7:21. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-49?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item four D, conduct a public hearing and consider Resolution Number 22-45, a resolution releasing and vacating a public storm sewer easement within Lot 107 Northwest Beaver Business Park. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:22. Clayton?
Good evening. During the design of the law, the senior lofts, Northwest 59th Avenue, which was approved earlier this year, it was determined that the sand, or the storm sewer easement on the property did not align with the actual installed public storm sewer location. So in order to get that rectified, we would need to vacate and abandon the existing storm sewer easement. And then on your consent agenda this evening is accepting a new storm sewer easement that encumbers the correct location of the storm sewer. So this is just really rectifying where those boundaries should be. Happy to answer any questions or go into further details needed.
Counsel, have any questions? I don't see any. This is a public, this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none online. Cindy, none? We'll close the public hearing then at 7:23. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-45?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item four E, conduct a public hearing on the proposed Amendment Number 12 to the Johnston East Central TIF Urban Renewal Plan, and consider Resolution Number 22-63, determining an area of the city to be an economic development and blighted area, and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for the urban renewal projects, and adopting Amendment Number 12 to the Johnston East Central TIF Urban Renewal Plan. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:24. Adam?
Evening again. Going to talk through our proposed Amendment Number 12 to the East Central TIF District, and then give a little context, the TIF District as well, relating back to the work session item. So our East Central TIF District currently covers most of Merle Hay Road, as well as a portion of Johnston Drive, and most of Beaver Drive. It's a legacy TIF District, so it's been around for, I think, about 25 years. This will be our 12th update to it. There's no change to the area as part of this urban renewal plan update. It's simply adding in projects that are anticipated, but would still need to be approved by city council at a future date. So the three items in particular that addresses is infrastructure, a part of what our proposed improvements are to Merle Hay Road and Johnston Drive, park improvements south of Ignite, and development agreements, which would include 5055 Merle Hay Road. Again, there's no obligation to spend the money. It's noted as part of the urban renewal plan. Counsel would still approve each expense, but it would allow for the use of TIF dollars to pay for those expenses if approved. Pause there and see if there's any questions on the proposed amendment, and then jump into the map that's got pulled up.
Counsel, have any questions for Adam? Don't see any, Adam.
All right. So as a reminder, given a couple of our agenda items here today, in 2013, the Johnston City Council developed in context with a consultant, what was called the Gateway Plan, 123 acres. Cindy, if you could zoom out just a little bit, please. 123 acres just north of I-80 along Merle Hay Road. At the time we talked about, or the time the city council looked at with public input, kind of the unique recreational opportunities and the forested areas along Beaver Creek that this area contained, and came up with a plan that addressed about seven or eight different points that the council wanted to accomplish as part of the redevelopment of this area. Just a quick summary of those was kind of unique elements that would draw folks to Johnston, recreation of recreation opportunities, development of housing, both higher density and medium density, transforming the older industrial properties that had kind of been at the end of their lifespan, creation of a destination park, creation of additional pedestrian corridors, development of regional stormwater, and balancing development needs with environmental sensitivity areas in the gateway. So over the last seven or eight years, city staff has been working towards that vision in a number of ways. Obviously, Terra Park being a big one, along with the water trail system and some additional trail developments, and put together this map just late last week, because a lot of these different development concepts that were included in the 2013 plan are starting to come to fruition. And so you can just kind of see here about half of the 123 acre gateway area will likely be under construction in the next couple of years, spanning from the regional parking and detention as part of Ignite, and proposed as part of the Bombers Hotel Project, Golf and Hotel Project, creation of that unique recreational corridor between the city park and the Ignite Park. Christensen proposed development that he's working on several concepts on, development of a kayak launch just off of Merle Hay Road, you know, third one on the Beaver Creek, the Bombers Top Golf in commercial development, along with the hotel. Recently, Lifeserve acquired a big portion of the Denny Elwell property, Erd Gardens. Wada Coopers developing two phases of multifamily housing. A dog park was part of that 2013 plan as well. And then Platinum Development recently acquired those Red Roof buildings that was talked about as part of the work session. There's still a vacant lot off to the east there. They've purchased that with plans to relocate their office there, as well as do some additional retail development. So just wanted to bring attention to that, given a couple of the projects that are on the city council this evening. And hopefully we'll see a number of these projects moving forward in the next couple of years and realization of that vision. So I'll pause there again to see if there's any questions.
Any questions for Adam?
But that map, that visual that you just showed, have you shared that with us, or is that just created?
What I overlaid on there was simply those boundaries, along with some titles. The underopinions of this kind of showing multi-use fields, stormwater dog park, hotel, identity residential, all that was part of what was created back in 2013, 2014 by the Johnston City Council.
And I think, Adam, did we use the same consultant who helped us with this project, who's done the comprehensive plan for the city and is also our consultant on the zoning? So it's this Hoysington?
Yeah, HKGI, I believe it is.
Right. So the nice thing is, there's some nice continuity. So, but they developed this plan back in 2014 or so for the council, as we were looking at trying to, what did we need to do to kind of spark redevelopment of that gateway area? So that was, that's the plan that you're looking at.
I understand, but it looks good. Actually, if you'd share it with us, it's really helpful to give a visual. You're seeing all of these different parts of that area being developed. A big visual like this, everything in place gets a good picture.
Yeah, a lot of activity in there this time around.
So is that all, Adam, is that all you wanted to present on this particular item?
That's all I have for the urban renewal plan. So, yeah, there's public hearing and then approval of the resolution then.
Okay. So this is the public hearing. The council has asked their questions. Do you have any other questions for Adam before he sits down? If not, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none. Cindy, anyone online? None there? And then we'll close the public hearing then at 7:31. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-63?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. In the last public hearing for this evening, item four F, conduct a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a purchase, sale, and development agreement with a private developer, and consider Resolution Number 22-62, ratifying, confirming, and approving publication of notice of public hearing and approving and authorizing execution of a purchase, sale, and development agreement lying between the city of Johnston and the Stoy and Can Development LLC. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:31. Adam?
Thanks again. Cindy, if you could pull up the Bombers Golf Site Concept Exhibit. So this is a proposed agreement that would sell two existing city properties, 5055 Merle Hay Road, as well as 5249 Merle Hay Road, and then a future owned city property that's under contract, 5229 Merle Hay Road, to Stoy and Can Development for purposes of development of this Bombers Top, Bombers Golf and Hotel. Just to give you a sense, 5055 is the majority of this property going along to the bike trail there to the east. 5249 was acquired by the city about 10 years ago, about a third of an acre on the north side of the property, and 5229 is sort of right on the frontage here. It's the Kelly's Automotive former property. I'm going to walk through a number of the development agreement terms. There's quite a bit to it. Feel free to stop me and ask any questions along the way. And then we'll talk a little bit about the tree removal request, which is also a non-consent agenda item after the public hearing. And I'm sure Clayton can jump in and answer any questions in addition to the information I have for you on that as well. So it's proposed as part of the land transaction that these three properties be transferred to the developer for the price of $1.6 million. The city would retain the necessary right of way along Merle Hay Road for the proposed improvements, as well as easements for the existing trail and a potentially modified trail, as well as a future water main that may be constructed adjacent or underneath that trail in the future as well. We'd also retain or have created temporary construction easements and storm sewer easements, and access to Beaver Creek for maintenance as part of the development agreement in those future easements the city would be allowed to obtain or already has. The developer would be committed to developing the hotel, as well as the Bombers Golf facility. The minimum description of that would be 60 heading bays off- The minimum description of that would be 60 heading bays off of the Bombers Golf, 80-plus hotel rooms, in combination, at least 70,000 square feet. It would be a minimum assessed value agreement placed on that portion of the project. So that would not be including the three parcels, the three outlaw parcels, one, two, and three, of $36 million. So upon completion of those minimum improvements, the assessor would place a $36 million or more assessed value excluding those three outlots. And then as part of that as well, the developer would be guaranteeing creation of at least 150 full-time equivalent positions as part of the hotel and the Bombers Golf. Developer also has plans to construct three additional buildings on those three commercial outlots. The specifics of those are not finalized at this point, but the development agreement does commit them to construction prior to December 31, 2026. They're generally intended to be restaurant, retail, entertainment, with potential upper-story office or residential uses. Again, these three commercial outlots would not be part of that minimum assessed value agreement. They would be separately assessed at market value. Looking at the site today, you'll see some dirt on there that's coming from the existing city project. The developer is proposing removal of a significant portion of the trees, and Clayton will jump in that a little bit more. But generally speaking, free removal area would be consisting of the northern part of this site extending east, excluding a small buffer on the east side. Use this water feature as a borrow pit, bringing dirt over to the west side of the site to raise it up to a development level, and then additional tree clearing in the parking and the parcel three areas. The trail would be relocated at the developer's cost as part of this, further to the east, avoiding a small wetland area that's just off of Beaver Creek. As part of their commitments of the minimum improvements, it would be obligated to conduct reforesting of this, along with savanna or grasses, native prairie, at the city's discretion, at least $50,000, up to, I think it was $125,000. So areas that would be cleared as part of the initial grading plan, primarily on the north, you'll see more savanna and those kind of grasses, and then on the south, reforestation, as well as some removal of invasive species and replanting of some higher quality species. Previously in front of council, there has been the idea to do tree clearing south of the development site. So that would be in the DOT property that would create a sight line going from I-80 into the development property. That'd help create a visual impact going into 50-55. This project would not require any of that. So the only tree removal on the DOT property would be that, which would be necessitated by the city's kayak launch at a future determined area just south of the project. So there would be a substantial reduction in the tree removal in that area due to the lack of need for it. Developer is also obligated for a number of infrastructure improvements they would be constructing. And Cindy, if I could, I'd be pulled that up one more time. Thank you. Currently in the CIP, this is envisioned as a public road that would serve the kayak launch, that would be somewhere in this vicinity. Instead of part of the development agreement, this would be a private drive. The developer would be constructing sanitary sewer and water along this to serve the hotel and the golf venue. They would also be installing that sanitary sewer and the water to serve the restrooms at the kayak launch. They would dedicate to the city the portion of the sanitary sewer and the water up to wherever that kayak launch would be. And then the city would have the right to use that private drive, as well as residence, and then a number of parking spaces. I believe it's five for trailers and eight vehicle stalls at a minimum for folks entering in and egressing out of that kayak launch. So if the development agreement is approved, the CIP would need to be updated to remove those anticipated costs related to the city grading of this property, as well as the storm, sanitary water, and road improvements currently proposed. Again, trail obligations, there's a section of the trail approximately 400 to 500 feet, that kind of that north-south bit that would be to be relocated slightly to the east. Developer would reconstruct that at their cost. Developer also agrees to construct a piece of public artwork with consulting the Johnston Arts Committee at a cost of up to $25,000. There's two existing signs on this property. One is the tall highway sign that you can see that has no face in it currently. The developer would remove that as part of their development. And then there's a neon sign, a former neon sign, says North End Diner on it, and a clock sits immediately north of Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh. At city council's discretion, that one could be restored with the city using one panel of that to announce the gateway for the kayak launch. Don't need an answer on that this evening, but it is an option in the development agreement at the city council's discretion. Final note there is the developer is also anticipating school utilization, operating reasonable discount or free off-peak use time of the golf facilities to the Johnston School District's golf team. The city incentives for the project, there is a substantial amount of grading that needs to take place on this site. Current plan is to try to minimize off-site import by utilizing the borrow pit where the water feature is at. The development agreement stipulates the initial $775,000 of substantiated fill costs would be in the form of a grant to the developer by the city, and then up to a combined maximum of $2 million would be rebated at a 50-50% rebate rate, reimbursement rate after completion of the minimum improvements. Current site plan, it does appear that the total grading costs will be under $3 million, which would mean the city's obligation should be less than the $2 million. There's still some details being finalized there. As part of the infrastructure I discussed, the road, sewer, and water, the city would provide a grant of $300,000 for those infrastructure improvements to help serve the kayak launch. And the city would provide a declining rebate percentage under a 14-year term for the, again, just the hotel and the golf portion of the project. It'd be the first six years at 85%, the next six years at 80%, and the final two years at 50%. With those final two years potentially increased up to a maximum of 70% if the underground detention costs, which may be necessary, exceed certain thresholds. The three outlots, again, are separate from that. They would be eligible at city council's discretion of the meeting, the high-quality retail, full-service restaurant, upper-story office requirements for the typical 10-year 75% rebate rate outlined in the city's Tiff policy for the Gateway. And a final note, the city would have the unconditional right to repurchase the property at the developer's purchase price, minus any pre-development grants, if the timing thresholds for commencing construction of the minimum improvements are not met. So I will pause there. You may have some questions again on the tree removal component, and Clayton has a lot more detail on that in the non-consent, but you may wish to visit some of that as part of this public hearing. And also notes, Alan Stoy, Eric, and Mitchell Khan are all in attendance this evening to answer any questions from the developer's side.
Council, have any questions for Adam?
Is the pole sign not usable?
The highway pole sign is a non-conforming sign currently. It doesn't meet the city's standards as far as sign as use. So it may be usable, but it's not up to city code. It's also, I think, in the middle of the parking lot. So from a grading and site design concept, it doesn't currently fit.
Adam, the $50,000 up to $125,000 that's being offered for, to offset the amount of tree clearing and proposed landscape improvements, that does not include the required landscape improvements they'd have to do for the development, correct? I just want to make sure that's correct.
Yeah, the intention is for it to be specific to the savanna reforestation and native prairie that they would be doing outside of kind of the parking lot and kind of the general front-facing portion of the property.
So all our other landscape requirements in terms of trees per 1,000 square feet, et cetera, et cetera, those are all outside of that money and in addition to?
That is my understanding. I'll look at the developer to confirm that is also their understanding. I believe it's fairly clear in the development agreement, but I think it's a fair question.
I like having it, you know, underlined and...
For the record, the developer was nodding their head.
Any other questions for Adam?
I don't have a question per se. I just think, you know, this is a project that has come together really, really quickly. And there's, I mean, obviously a lot of excitement about it, and I think rightfully so. You know, I think a couple of things. One, I think tonight, this is a real reward of the city being really patient about this piece of property. We've had, you know, we've been working on this, the lower Gateway area, the Gateway area for, you know, almost eight to 10 years now, trying to have a plan. And then, and then as we worked with property owners down there, and they often came forward with ideas and visions that were not really consistent with the Gateway plan. And I think we continue to remain patient, and we've got tonight an opportunity to do really a top-notch project that not only is what we've, it's been publicly disclosed so far, but also frankly, that a lot of it's been, you know, talked about, or what the developer envisions for the outlots, I think, too, can be really exciting and really positive, not just for the city of Johnson, but for the entire metro area. So really excited about that element of it. And also, too, I think the fact that the developers are here are local folks. I mean, Dr. Stoy is a Johnston resident. His kids have gone through the Johnston school system. You know, he talked when he was at the Economic Development Committee about, you know, connecting him with the schools, because obviously his kids are, have gone to the Johnston school system. So I think having that tie, the Khan brothers are from, I think, Waukee, and so the fact that they've got ties as well to the area. To me, the fact that whenever we can, can have a developer who's got a local tie, I think that really helps to really get engaged in some of these discussions about, and we talked right from the get-go about, hey, how are we going to, how are we going to make sure that the trees in this area are stronger at the end of this project than they are today? That was one of the first items that we talked about, and really appreciate your willingness to take that issue seriously. And so I think that, you know, that both, our patience is being rewarded tonight, and also the fact that we've got some local folks here willing to really step up and invest in the community is one reason I'm so excited about this, as well as the other projects we've got going on in the Gateway that we'll talk about later in the meeting as it relates to the Ignite site, too, so.
This is a public hearing. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Cindy, anyone online? We will close the public hearing then at 7:37. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-62?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. I'll just add to what Councilman Cope has already stated. I think this is an incredibly exciting, exciting project that is coming to our community. It fits so well with the vision that we laid out 10 years ago now, and it has required a lot of patience through time. And we were presented with a lot of, lot of proposals that just almost made us, it made us cringe. And, and we said no, and we said no for the right reasons, and now we have a project before us that, that truly fits within that vision, and we couldn't be more excited about it. I was interviewed this afternoon by WHO Television about the project, and I shared with them then, and I truly believe this, that I, I think that with everything that we have going on at the south end of Merle Hay Road with the Bombers project, and with the Ignite project, and with, you know, the other things that we see developers down there proposing now, that the Gateway District, which is what we're calling it now, the Gateway District, is going to be the premier sporting entertainment district in the metro area. It's going to be the go-to place, and it's exciting that it's happening right here in Johnston. And it lays, you know, it's kind of the front door to our community, and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's at the south end of what, you know, we're, we're talking about now is the Magical Mile that will extend all the way up to the town center. And, you know, we can all expect, I think, to see a lot more development, whether it's retail, restaurants, or some additional hotels stretch that entire area with lots of walkable pedestrian streets or sidewalks and trails and trees and everything else that goes along with that, so.
If you talk about it too much more, the airport's going to want to relocate to Johnston as well.
So it's, you know, exciting stuff, and we can all be proud that we're, we're a part of this decision-making, so. So with that, Cindy, we have a motion and a second. Vote please.
Council member Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the, with the exclusion of item 5W.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote please.
Council member Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Let's take up item 5W, which is to consider resolution number 22-58, a resolution of support for the new terminal for the Des Moines International Airport. Jim, is that you? Or Cindy, or?
Yes, we've had quite a few conversations regarding the airport project. I want to notify, notice that Kevin Foley's in the audience with us this evening, the general manager of the airport. So we've, again, we've talked about this a number of times. This is really a metro-wide effort to try to provide support for the airport terminal project, and we have, many of the communities around the metro have already made their commitments. I want to take, take my hat off to Mayor Derenfeld. She did quite a bit of research and sort of took this on to take a look at what makes sense for our community and what level we should participate in comparing us with what other communities are also including in their agreements for this, for this request. So basically, the, the resolution you had before you this evening touches on a lot of the issues and, and that many of the communities have identified and how they want to put their commitment towards their airport terminal into effect. And basically, what it does for us, it does pledge $20 per capita for our residents of Johnston in support of the airport proposal. And I guess I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have also, if you have any questions from Kevin Foley. He is here as well.
Council, have any questions for Jim?
I know, Mayor, in an email you circulated, there was some discussion about changing the start date. Does that need to be updated?
Yeah, there was, the first payment due date was inadvertently stated as, I'm scrolling down here. I think it was July 1, 2024. And consistent with the terms that we discussed at our last council meeting, we discussed having the start date be July 1, 2023, which would be fiscal year '24.
And just to remind the council, the source of the funding that we are providing would be from hotel motel tax. And, you know, hopefully some of the information we've shared this evening shows that we will get additional tax dollars than, than we have in the past related to growth in our hotels in our community. And I know that was an important thing for the city council as opposed to having, paying, paying for this through property taxes, that a hotel motel would be what we've determined to be the most appropriate source for the funding.
Any other questions, council?
I guess I'd just like to say, and I think that, you know, that we did spend a lot of time talking about this and, and, you know, initial back and forth, and appreciate Kevin and his folks coming out to talk to us, and I think stressing something that we already knew, just how important this project is to the growth of the entire Des Moines metro area, and I think that's why all of us came around to be supportive of it. So we do feel that this is very exciting with the, what's on tap down at the airport, and it's vitally important, something that a lot of Johnston residents use, and so...
important, something that a lot of Johnston residents use. And so really excited to see this come to fruition.
Mayor, if I may, I would like to piggyback on Councilmember Cope's comments there. Mr. Foley, first and foremost, the, the amount of data that you provided in your initial request was incredible as far as the demographic and usage within the report. I think that's fantastic. And I applaud you for knowing who your customers are, so to speak, and where they go and how they fly and things along those lines. And to that end, I also do want to give compliments to Councilmember Cope for continually pushing the conversation of, of making sure that we're a good regional player. That Johnston has done so in the past and hopefully will continue to do so. And Mayor, to you and to the other staff as well, for doing then those deep dives, so to speak, to analyze how we've contributed regionally to other efforts. And I appreciate that. And I also appreciate you taking a good, hard look at where a resolution could be most beneficial to the residents of Johnston, but also help support the airport. So I'm eager to be able to vote in favor.
Any other questions or comments? I did ask Cindy to, the one resolution that we hadn't seen yet, but we were aware was passed by another community was the city of Grimes. And I did ask her to provide that to you on the dais tonight. So I had a chance to look at that. That's before you as well. If there aren't any other questions or comments, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this item? If not, then do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-eight?
I'll make the motion, I'll put the amendment changing the date in paragraph two to July one, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on to item seven A. Consider resolution number twenty-two dash sixty-one, a resolution approving a tree removal plan for fifty fifty-five, fifty-two twenty-nine, and fifty-two forty-nine Merle Hay Road.
Good evening. We have talked about this property extensively this evening with the public hearing. And this action item would be specific for the tree clearing plan necessary to commence work for the site. They are, the developer is up against a deadline of March fifteenth of this year to get tree removal completed as a result of state and federal regulations on Indiana brown bat and northern long-eared bat habitat, which are endangered species. So a tree removal has to occur on or prior to March fifteenth. Otherwise, we're looking at about a six-month delay in allowing for tree removal. The next window would be in the fall. This property, as you see outlined here, in the applicant is requesting that the areas in green be allowed for clear-cut removal. That's approximately twenty-three point six acres. The areas in red would be no disturbance. The areas shown in yellow would be tree removal subject to consultation with city staff prior to tree removal. That way, if there's any trees of desirable quality, we can work to preserve those. And the developer has agreed that they would consult with city staff and will find a time to make those consultations on-site prior to the start of work. And then there is an area of identified wetlands shown in blue. That is an area of non-disturbance. It's within the red zone as well. The Merle Hay Road Gateway Master Plan from 2013 did acknowledge the natural resources within the gateway district. It acknowledged that they're a great asset for our community and they're an opportunity to connect our premier recreation developments that we're having back into nature. But it also did recognize that certain improvements to our environmental health need to occur. Our residents found that the area was generally unsightly. Trail users didn't always feel safe using it, using the trails through the area. So while the plan didn't get into specifics of where tree removal needed to occur, it did acknowledge it. So by approving the tree removal plan, you are consistent with our gateway master plan, as well as our Thrive 2040 comprehensive plan, which identifies this property as a commercial development and parks and open space, which really just means work with the developer to make sure that we're considering our natural resources and doing our best efforts to preserve those areas of good quality. So by approving this plan, you would be consistent with all of our planning efforts. Getting into the specifics of tree removal, in 2014, the city did conduct a tree survey of the property, which is largely consistent with what is on ground yet today. And what that survey found was that approximately eighty-five percent of the species on site were either undesirable species as listed by city code or invasive species as listed by the Iowa DNR, those species being silver maple, elm, primarily Siberian elm and Chinese elm, ox elder, ash, cottonwood, and mulberry species. And they're all in our mix together. So eighty-five percent of the stand is stuff of not good quality, and we would like to see removed. Earlier in the agenda, you had the proclamation for Invasive Species Awareness Week, and we have some, a lot of invasive species on this site that need to be addressed. So you'd certainly be doing efforts to improve the health of the environment by approving this tree removal plan. The applicant has identified a tree protection for areas that are joining those non-removal areas so that as crews are on-site doing work, there will be a visible temporary orange snow, snow fence. So those crews should not be going into those do-not-d disturb areas. And that would help to protect, protect the root systems of those trees to remain as well, so that we have a higher chance of survivability. And as Adam discussed earlier in the agenda, the applicant has agreed to fifty thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of prairie, savanna, and forest restoration work, so that we can work in those areas to remain, as well as some of those areas of disturbance to make sure that they get replanted in a way that is best for the environment and aesthetically pleasing for users of the site, as well as any users of the trails through the area. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have going into further detail. We do have the developer in the audience this evening as well. So I will end there.
Counsel, have any questions for Clayton?
I would, I'd, I'd like to make more of a statement. I got, I, I ran for city council because of a proposal that was on the board in 2016 to cut view corridors from the old north end diner to the interstate. And I was, at the time, I was on the tree board, and I was opposed because I didn't want to see us taking out trees for development. None of us knew what it would be. I will tell you today that I am in favor of this development, and I think they've done a good job working through the issues that I have with the tree removals. I visited the site on Sunday. I walked through the site. I've read through the tree survey. There is going to be trees remaining between the interstate and this development. So we'll still have sort of a green front door. And it was very important to me also that we protect the corridor around Beaver Creek because we've invested a lot of money into that water trail. And keeping it in a somewhat natural, as much as you can with all the noise from the interstate was still very important to me. And I think they've done a great job. The only, I met with Clayton and Adam the other day, and the only thing that I asked for, and it's in the plan, is that we could walk along the trail. And in the area that's fifteen or twenty feet from the trail to the north, where it's shown in the plan as yellow, that we could, we might be able to find a few trees in there that are worth keeping. And maybe they won't stick around for forever. I mean, one of them is a honey locust. But it's a native honey locust, which means that as it gets older, it gets a lot of thorns. But in a young, when it's young, it doesn't have the thorns. And while our other landscape that you're going to invest in is growing, having a few trees along that trail that are more mature will give us a staged landscape. So it won't all look so barren and brand-new. So it's kind of like a blending, the old and the new. And I really appreciate that you were open to that. So I just want to say that I'm all in for this plan. And also, I very much appreciated your offer of meeting with the tree board. They, they will be happy to help in any way they can with the species selection. So, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, I would just, and I think, you know, Councilperson Martin brought up the, the item that was reviewed in 2016. And that was significantly different than kind of what's being proposed. You know, I think we've learned from that. That really would have removed a lot of trees right along Beaver Creek, kind of as you come off of between Merle Hay, kind of, you know, kind of shooting to the northeast. And this, this plan really tries to, to maintain a lot of the trees along the creek. And I think that's something that the city staff, as they consulted with folks from, you know, that are active in these issues in the community, also, I think, work at DNR, they really provided some nice guidance and help. And so I think this is, you know, a good step forward. And I think as we've learned kind of from what we first originally thought about in 2016 and learned and listened, and I think we've got a good approach here.
Any other questions or comments, counsel? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Anyone online, Cindy?
No.
If not, then do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two sixty-one?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven B. Consider resolution number twenty-two dash forty-four, a resolution approving a site plan for Lou Clarkson Park Softball Complex Phase Two. The subject property is located at seventy-seven twenty-five Northwest Fifty-Fourth Avenue, PZ Case twenty-two dash oh four.
I'm not going to go into too much detail since you had a nice presentation on this project during your work session this evening. But just as a reminder, this is phase two, which includes the restroom concession facility for the softball complex at Lou Clarkson Park, including the shade structures for the softball fields themselves, and some minor utility improvements as well. I mean, I'm happy to go into further detail as needed or answer any questions. I believe Clay did a great, great job summarizing the project during the work session.
Counsel, have any questions?
I'd just like to say, and I think there's some folks in the audience tonight who, who, while they're very excited about the bombers concept and have participated in similar facilities, they've also have played a lot of softball games at Lou Clarkson where they haven't had access to permanent bathrooms. And they're really, really excited about this improvement and called me today and urged me to support this project. So I am, I may be, this might be the item that I am the most excited about on the council agenda tonight, because I do think this is, and then not just about the bathrooms, really, frankly. The one thing that's really kind of great about this whole project is the, the Johnson Girls Softball Association, much like our Johnson Little League, are volunteer organizations that's similar, you know, softball, or soccer also as well, where a lot of volunteers spend a lot of time putting into helping make those, not just those programs, but also those facilities what they are. And this is really going to help make those softball fields be as, as nice as any in the entire region. And we, there are tournaments where we play down there, where our games are played, where teams come from Minnesota, Missouri, all over the Midwest. And they, they, those folks stay in Johnston, they shop in Johnston. And adding these facilities is really going to make that a top-notch facility. So this is really, I think, a, a great addition and something I'm really excited. I really appreciate the work that John has done and his work with the softball association, as well as Clay and the folks from Snyder.
Now I've lost track. We have a motion, right?
I think we've got.
We do not have a motion. Okay. Was there any further discussion? Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two dash forty-four?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven C. Consider a city attorney engagement agreement with Allers and Cooney.
Yes. So last December, the city put out an RFQ, Request for Qualifications for City Attorney Services. And we had six firms or individuals respond to that RFQ. And so we went through a process where we reviewed each of the submittals and decided who we would want to follow through with an interview and then eventually select a firm for our city attorney. The, I do want to thank Mayor Darrenfeld, councilmembers Cope and Evans, and then as well, staff Cindy Reames, David Woolwarding, and Dennis McDaniel. If you haven't been through those processes before, it is quite a process to go through and get the proposals, review the proposals, come to consensus on who you want to interview, go through the interview process, and then also make a selection for the firm that we would like to serve, serve our community. The good news is we had some very good quality applications. And so it was great to know that, that we had a lot of interest in being our city attorney. At the end of the process, the group came to consensus that we wanted to hire Allers and Cooney to be our legal representatives. And primarily, our primary attorney involved would be Christine Stone, and then with Maria Brownell being the assistant city attorney, working with Christine. And there also are a number of other attorneys within the firm that we will work with, particularly related to prosecutions with our police department. And so the recommendation from the committee is to engage with Allers and Cooney for city legal services. Christine and Maria are here. And I don't know if you want to introduce yourself, I guess. So I guess maybe.
Why don't you come forward and, and you've appeared before us before. Just as a reminder for all of the city council members, why don't you just?
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council. Maria and I just wanted to come tonight and personally thank you for selecting us to serve as your next city attorney. We do understand that you have a choice. And there are other very well-qualified firms in the area. But we're just very pleased and honored that you selected us. And personally, I look very forward to working with all of you. And don't hesitate to ever reach out if there's anything I can assist with.
Maria?
I'm Maria Brownell. Thank you. I would echo everything that Christine just said. Just really appreciate both the opportunity to have even been considered and then the opportunity to serve. So we really look forward to spending more time with all of you.
Not only did you interview well, but you've, you know, you've, you've, you've done some work for us before, and you've done incredible work. We've all been very pleased with what you've done. So we, we're, we look forward to working with you. We're excited about it.
Very much.
So the action this evening is there is a contract that's been proposed for city council consideration to engage Allers and Cooney for legal services.
Counsel, have any questions, comments?
I just like, want to make a couple of comments. First of all, first of all, I really want to thank Leyden and Pearson, who've been our longtime city attorneys, who've done a great job. Tim and Bob have really served our city really well. And so I don't want to, to go without mentioning, I think, the, the great service they provided to the city. And also very excited to have Christine and Maria on board as well. They did, I think they really came through in their interviews. Christine's got a background of previously being a city attorney in Bettendorf and also Ames. And so I think they're going to be able to hit the ground running. And Allers already does a lot of great work for the city. So it's, we've been very well-served over the last several years. And I think we're going to be very well-served by both Christine and Maria.
Any other comments, questions, counsel? If not, do we have a motion to approve the city attorney engagement agreement with Allers and Cooney?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion, motion passed. Item seven D. Consider resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-six, approving the, the prelim, I'm having a tough time with that word, preliminary plat site plans for Ignite, Johnson Sports and Fitness, Johnson Sports and Fitness, and resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-seven, approving a minor amendment to the Ignite Recreation Complex and Johnson Gateway Park PUD regarding signage architectural requirements and bulk regulations. Your in? Aaron?
Thank you. Last October, the city council approved a rezoning of 31.59 acres west of the northwest Johnston Drive and Merle Hay Road intersection to planned unit development district to be known as the Ignite Recreation Complex and Johnston Gateway Park PUD. Now Ignite Johnston has submitted site plans for development of the property to include a 208,500-plus square foot recreation facility that will house an indoor track, training facility, and multipurpose courts, in addition to outdoor fields and volleyball courts. And the site plans also show future construction of a subsidiary building that will house restaurant and retail uses, and also a restaurant or brewery use with Merle Hay Road frontage. This project is a public-private partnership with the city of Johnston that will include infrastructure improvements and construction of the city park and regional stormwater detention basin. If you would here, you can refer to that overhead as I'm walking you through the site plan. There will be a currently unnamed public loop street extended west of Merle Hay Road at the intersection with Johnston Drive. It'll run north-south behind the Jimmy Johns and Polly Eyes properties and connect back to Merle Hay Road through property owned by Andrew Christianson at 5288 Merle Hay Road. That road will be constructed by the city and has a tentative completion date of May 2023. There will be three separate access points to the Ignite property from that new public loop street, as well as two locations from Merle Hay Road. There's a right-in, right-out access over proposed Lot 1 and a second Merle Hay Road access coming from Childserves full access at Merle Hay Road. So again, three accesses to the site, 1, 2, 3, from the Loop Street, and two accesses from Merle Hay Road, one over proposed Lot 3. And also, the site can be accessed through the Childserves property as these drives and parking areas are interconnected. With regard to pedestrian sidewalk and trail connections, the city will construct a five-foot public sidewalk along the northwest and south sides of that new public loop street. The city will also construct a trail connection from the existing Beaver Creek Trail to the public sidewalk on the west side of Merle Hay Road. The city will also relocate a portion of the existing Beaver Creek Trail, shifting it to the west around Ignite's outdoor field. And currently, that trail comes down in approximately this location. It will be shifted to the west, just outside of the outdoor fields. Ignite will construct a shared-use path connected to the public trail system that extends north-south between their outdoor field and fieldhouse on their property. Ignite will also construct a sidewalk connection north of the future building on proposed Lot 3 that connects the sidewalk at Merle Hay Road to the gymnasium and city trail north of the site. Ignite will also construct a sidewalk connection from the sidewalk on the west side of the future Loop Street to the courtyard and fieldhouse entrances and internal shared-use path. For parking, the city code does not contain a category for indoor/outdoor sports fields and courts, but staff did assign parking requirements when the PUD was approved. The number of parking spaces required is listed on page 11 of your staff report. Between lots 1 through 3, Ignite's outdoor field and the city park, the total parking requirement is 759 spaces. 864 parking spaces will be provided. 414 of those will be constructed by Ignite. The city has agreed to construct 231 spaces north of the fieldhouse and gymnasium to be used for Ignite through execution of a development agreement. And 219 existing spaces on Childserves property are available for use by Ignite through a use agreement with Childserves. Of 864 spaces, 688 are expected to be available upon opening day of the facility. The remaining spaces are shown as future, to be installed with development of Lot 3, and the spaces adjacent to the city park to be graded by the city and constructed by Ignite with development of Lot 2. I do, when we're looking at the city-constructed parking lot north of the site, I do want to underscore that that parking lot design and lighting for those 231 spaces will be reviewed and approved by a separate process. But those improvements are shown on this Ignite site plan to illustrate the city's commitment to providing parking support for Ignite project and to show how and where Ignite will accommodate that overall parking demand. At the rezoning stage, we did have public comments expressing concern about the proximity of the proposed city-constructed parking lot to the northwest adjacent Meadow Park townhomes and Terrace Ridge condominiums. Civil Design Advantage did prepare a buffer planning exhibit that was included as an attachment to your staff report. Cindy, can you maybe go to my list of attachments? So Civil Design Advantage did prepare this buffer planning exhibit, and it shows a mix of evergreens and deciduous plantings to be installed to the north of this proposed parking area to supplement a stand of existing trees to help buffer noise and lighting. Another important detail of that exhibit is to note the distance to the closest adjacent home from the parking lot, which is approximately 190 feet. I've also provided an exhibit in the staff report that shows lighting levels associated with the north parking lot. Cindy, that would be, if we go back to the list of attachments, the first one you wanted to click on, that one there. And when that opens, this exhibit, when it does open, is going to show where the zero, let's see, it's kind of hard to see there, but it shows where the zero light level is in relation to the adjacent homes and the parking area there. You can see this line here is where the light levels around the parking area hit zero. And that's 140 feet to the next closest home. And that actually doesn't take into account that the existing trees here and the trees that will help supplement that, that'll help to block light as well there. Proposed stormwater detention for the Ignite property. Cindy, maybe you could go back to the very first exhibit you had up. Thank you. Stormwater detention for the Ignite property is provided in an off-site wet-bottomed regional detention basin that's located northwest of the site. That basin will be constructed by the city on city property. This basin is also sized to provide detention for undetained off-site flows coming from green meadows. And as with the north parking lot, the grading plan and detention calcs for this off-site basin will be approved by separate process. The Ignite Recreation Complex and Johnston Gateway Park PUD stipulates allowed building materials, which include precast concrete panels, architectural block, metal wall or roof panels, glass translucent curtain wall, storefront or plating, and further states due to size and architectural constraints posed by the fieldhouse. Translucent fabric-covered building membrane construction methods shall be allowed. Cindy, are you able to find the elevations and open those for us? And the elevations provided by the applicant indicate the proposed materials are in compliance with those PUD requirements. The proposed future building on Lot 2, which is south of the fieldhouse and gymnasium, was not envisioned to be part of the project when the PUD was written. Therefore, the architectural requirements of the PUD do not address the future building on Lot 2. Therefore, staff has provided a recommended PUD amendment to establish architectural requirements for Lot 2. And those requirements would be those, it will fall back to our code of ordinances as it relates to commercial structures, which require 75% permanent materials on all sides of the building. It consists of a combination of brick, architectural concrete panels, textured concrete block, architectural steel or stone panels. So something you are familiar with. That amendment to the PUD would just establish those architectural requirements for Lot 2. Elevations for Lot 2 were not provided with this site plan submittal, and those would be reviewed and approved by the council separately at a later date prior to issuance of a building permit for Lot 2. Likewise, elevations for Lot 3 were not submitted with the site plan submittal, and those would be reviewed and approved at a later date as well. Lot 3 is actually located outside of the PUD, and therefore, the architectural requirements for Lot 3 are those found in our code of ordinances, which I just previously ran through that list of materials. In addition, that Lot 3, and again, when I say Lot 3, I'm referring to this lot here. And as it's within 300 feet of Merle Hay Road, there would be a 50% brick requirement for the side of that building that faces Merle Hay Road as well. With regard to open space, 114,900 square foot of open space is required, and 77 trees and 115 shrubs. In addition, street trees are required to be planted adjacent to all streets, spaced at 50-foot intervals. And the site plans are in compliance with 152,000 square foot of open space and a sufficient number of trees and shrubs to meet those planting requirements. There's no buffer required between the subject property and the adjacent C3 properties, and any necessary buffering between that north parking area and regional detention basin and those northwest adjacent homes. Again, that would be the responsibility of the city to buffer that, and we would be, we would review and approve that later at a separate date. Anyway, that was a quick rundown of the site plan. And this approval is subject to a number of recommended conditions of approval, similar to almost every other project that we present to this, to the council. A few unique to this project I'll quickly cover. I mentioned earlier the need to amend the PUD to establish architectural requirements for Lot 2. We also need an amendment to establish lot size and setbacks for Lot 2. And tonight's approval established bulk regulations, will establish bulk regulations. Also, at the applicant's request, we have included a minor amendment to the PUD to address roof overhang for the gymnasium roof. These are in addition to the sign amendments that we discussed at a work session earlier this month. We went through those in great detail, so I won't revisit that tonight. But those sign amendments have been incorporated into the resolution tonight as well. And finally, there's some conditions of approval regarding amendments to address written comments from our consulting engineer, our public works department, and our fire marshal as well. I did send a notice of tonight's meeting to a 320-foot radius of the property. I did receive one comment from Johnston resident John Harvey, and I did include that as an attachment to your staff report. I have not heard from any other neighbors. Do you have any questions for me? I can work to answer those now. Otherwise, here in the audience with us tonight, we have Chad and Brian O'Meara from Ignite, Scott Snyder, he's an architect with Simonsen &amp; Associates, and Keith Wagon with Civil Design Advantage. Do you have any questions for me? I can work to answer those now.
Aaron, you mentioned the email that we received from John Harvey. I know that you and other staff perhaps immediately followed up with him. Do you want to just summarize what your conversation with him was?
Yeah, I believe Adam reached out to Mr. Harvey. But I think some of his concerns were, he felt like the location of the stormwater basin had shifted from some early submittals. And I think we've gone back and we've talked about the issue, and it hasn't shifted. That's always been the location of that stormwater basin. And let's see, his other concerns. We did add initially the, Cindy, if you could go back to maybe that very first exhibit that we pulled up, so I can talk about that north parking area. If you'll come down just a little bit. Initially, this parking area here didn't include this northmost lobe. That was added at a later date. So he was correct. This isn't what maybe he had seen, some very early versions of the site plan process. But that's why I went back in the staff report and tried to provide some additional exhibits showing the light levels around that parking area, how they'll be perceived by those northwest adjacent properties, and also provided you with that buffer exhibit to show that there is intent to provide some further buffering there to help with noise and light levels there. I know Adam reached out to Mr. Harvey. Adam, did he have anything else that? Okay.
Other questions or comments?
I have a couple. I don't know if they're a question or a comment. I think that we could, that bike trail connection that's going east to west on the north side of the development, on the north side of the Ignite building between there and the parking lot, doesn't have very many trees toward, as you go west. And I think that might be one of the, yeah, the sports field, the football field, the baseball field, doesn't have any trees around it. And I feel like, I understand that the city is going to be responsible for the landscaping around the parking lots to the north. But if Ignite could find us some money to help with the landscaping of that outdoor facility, a few trees along there would make it a lot more pleasant for a trail. If we could plant some trees on the north side, if they could plant some trees on the south side. And I think also that those neighbors in that townhome community might appreciate some landscaping along there, because I'm pretty sure that some of their issues are lights. And we've talked about this before. So that would be my hope, that we keep talking about this landscaping on the north side of this project to make sure that we, you know, address the concerns of the neighbors as much as we can. My other question is, we had met about a big outdoor Jumbotron screen, and I can't remember where that was going to be. Do you remember having those conversations, like, is that going to be in the northwest corner? The northeast corner?
And you're not talking about the ribbon signs that'll be on the building?
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about a video sign showing events. And I understood it was going to be in the big football arena.
I actually, you know what, I'm going to go ahead and defer to the guys from Ignite if you want to come up and talk about that a little bit. I think that the intent is maybe to have possibly two of those Jumbotrons. I think one of them might be placed somewhere in this internal courtyard area. I think there was some intent to, that they be mobile and be able to be moved around the site. If you gentlemen have anything you want to add in that regard. But it kind of falls outside of our, it falls outside of our sign ordinance of going to be considered a sign and something that we really wouldn't police or address. Go ahead.
Chad Snyder, Simonsen Associates Architects, 1717, in your cell, Des Moines.
You want to use the microphone?
One of the proposals was to put the Jumbotron right here on this future building lot. So it'd be, it'd be facing inward to the plaza.
Oh, well, I, that's totally different than what I thought we saw. That gives me no problems at all. The building will block it from the neighboring home, so there's no way they could ever be here, that, or anything.
Correct.
Okay.
And maybe, yeah, that won't be mobile, then it'll be a fixed unit.
Yes, yes.
So Chad O'Meara with Ignite. Also, yeah, that's a plaza area. That's where the Jumbotron was. We did have a second one depicted, so I don't want, you know, and based on some of the conversations, we did remove that one as a permanent.
Wow.
Anyway, that's, I just want to be clear that we did depict two at one point.
But those are not the ribbon. Right, right, those are different.
I don't, I don't have an issue with the ribbon. We had this meeting, I don't know what, but it had to do a lot with the outdoor concerts and noise and videos. And so you still could have a concert in that large field space, but it doesn't go with a great big video board either, in addition to, or does it? Okay, good, thank you.
Other questions or comments for Adam?
So Adam, just looking at, so it appears that the intent for the fields will be that they're all going to be turf fields, is that right?
You know, and that's something I haven't reviewed as part of the site plan review just because it's not, it doesn't fall within that purview. Keith's nodding, yes.
And that, and I also, and it sounds like, John, the intent is to, the city park fields will be all artificial turf as well.
And I don't think the design on that is complete yet, but John, are, your thoughts?
So the, what's the, the upper is the, maybe you could maybe just point it out.
Yep. So the city has two distinct areas. This will be turf. When you go into the floodway right here, this will be natural.
Grass, okay, right. I think that's, I think that's really cool. I mean, I think it'll certainly add to the use and of the facility, so.
Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Not? Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-56?
Move approval, second.
A motion and a second, further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-57?
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Lot of exciting stuff on our agenda this evening. Next item on the agenda is a little less exciting, and that is to consider approval of claims in the amount of $687,369.85. Do we have a motion?
Move approval, second.
Have a motion and a second, discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to city administrator comments.
I'm somewhat relieved, because when you said it was less exciting, I thought you were to the city administrator. I'm relieved that it was actually the payment of the bill.
We're back to the exciting stuff again.
Got a couple of quick things here. First of all, this afternoon, I received an email from Des Moines Water Works, and the mayor and I had sat down with Des Moines Water Works a week or so ago to learn more about what's happening with the regional water discussion. And what, just to give you an update on where we are, actually, the email I got this afternoon, I haven't had a chance to review it yet, so I will share this with the city council, but they did send a draft 28E, 28F agreement that they're going to be working on, which establishes this regional water authority. And what they're asking the city to do between now and the end of March, and actually, we will have it on our next city council agenda, is for us to pass a resolution supporting and participating in the development of that agreement. And already, they've, part of the process that got this moving forward, the city of Des Moines, Des Moines Water Works, the West Des Moines Water Works, and Urbandale Water Board have all approved this resolution to begin the conversations of establishing the 28E and the regional authority. Also, the cities of Ankeny and Waukees have already passed the resolution, and again, we will have it on our next council agenda, but really what this does, it says, we are interested in working towards the establishment of the regional water authority, and we want to participate in that process. So, again, I will share the information with you. I just thought I'd let you know this evening, I just received it this afternoon, and we knew it was coming, I just wouldn't know, wouldn't share the timing. So there'll be a lot more conversation regarding the Central Iowa Water Works, is what that, what the authority's going to be called, so we will share that information as it becomes available. I did send out today to the city council a calendar invite for a joint meeting we're going to have with Grimes on April 7th, related to the fire study that we had done. And so that'll be a six to eight o'clock, again, April 7th, and you should have that. If you haven't seen it yet, it should be in your inbox for setting that time aside, have a joint meeting with the Grimes City Council. We haven't decided what location it will be at this point, but we will share that information once that becomes available. And just another note, we, staff does have a meeting yet this, later this week with the Corps of Engineers. We have an annual meeting where the staff sits down with staff from the Corps of Engineers, talks about things that is happening in Johnston, as well as things happening in Salerville and core property, particularly along the Des Moines River and those types of facilities that the Corps manages. And again, we do this every year. It happens to be this week, and I'll share with the council at the next meeting, the topics that we talk about, and if there's anything that we need to share related to happenings at the Corps, but I just want to let you know that meeting is happening. That's all I had. Does any, anybody else have anything they want to add this evening, just like Adam does?
Eric is under the weather today, so I'm going to try to cover for him on this. Just in front of the town center, so immediately in front of Walgreens, if you're southbound on Merle Hay Road, as part of the city's intersection, intersection project, we put in a concrete pad for a bus shelter. And after talking to DART, they said they would work with us to put an art bus shelter on that site. So there was funding put in place last year for that. The concrete pad is in place. I believe you've seen a prior rendition of this, and there was some feedback. It's also been through the Arts Council Committee a couple of times, incorporating some additional color and Johnston-specific items in there. As a reminder, there was an RFP process to select an artist to design it. So I believe, subject to any comments this evening, that is our final design. We'd be turning that over to DART. They would be installing the bus shelter and the art that would go in there. Most of that's at their cost. I think there's a few thousand dollars associated with the art that the city is responsible for, which council previously blessed using some leftover grant funds from Polk County on. So barring any concerns or comments on this design, that would be submitted over to DART, and hopefully we'll have that art bus shelter in place this spring.
Council, any questions or comments for Adam?
Adam, quickly, I don't have any comments for this, comments, exactly, no questions. That design, is that heated? Heated, or is just, just plain shelter?
Oh, is it heated? Is the bus shelter? It is not. And I think we've also talked about whether we get Wi-Fi to the bus shelters. We're not sure if the metronet Wi-Fi will extend to it at this point, but no, the shelter is not heated, and there's no Wi-Fi on it, but the city town center Wi-Fi may reach it, we're uncertain.
Well, there was a question, but yes, thank you.
Cindy, could you go back to the artwork itself? It was suggested to me recently by one of our local artists, Lisa Cooper, who is also the chair of our Arts Council, that wouldn't it be cool if the buses, to take greater advantage of the artwork that's being done for these art shelters, if we could convince DART that they should wrap some of the buses with this artwork? I thought that sounded like a really cool idea. I haven't suggested it to DART yet, but I...
If DART is willing to pay for that, sure.
Well, that, that would be, that would be part of the issue. But I thought it was a great idea, and I told her that I would pass it along, so.
It'll be kind of interesting to me, this, the, you know, the bus thing is sort of like, more, the bus, it's, it's like a, it's like a landscape. This, you know, if you look at the glass of that, whereas the art piece is very, is like, is straight up and down. So it'll be interesting to see as they kind of convert that, how will that kind of fan out, or how will that look?
Yeah, how they would wrap it around the shoulder itself.
Because it's, it's, you understand, this is like ported, and that's really landscape, and how will they, so it'd be nice to be able to see how that will actually look. Yeah, for clarification, I believe that will be repeated on each of those panes, so I believe there's five repeats of that design. That's how I understood it. Councilmember Martin, you may have been at the last meeting.
I was, got there late, and I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Well, thank you, Adam. Any other staff with information to share tonight? If not, Councilman Evans?
Nothing, thanks.
All right?
Thanks.
Cope?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I, you know, lots of great things happened tonight in the council, a lot of great projects, and I think, you know, staff has done incredible work on a lot of these projects, and I'm not going to call on anybody specifically, but I think it's really a combination of a lot of different people who were, who we, you know, we have a meeting, and we would say, okay, here's what needs to be done by this date, and they got it done, and even though it was almost going to be hard, very hard to do, and I just think, I just want to acknowledge that. And second of all, it may be a sign that Jim's retirement is out there in the world, but there's two things that are, that sort of happen. One is, every time I go to a league meeting, city managers from around the state come up to me and say, hi, oh, and tell me about Johnston. But the other thing is, Jim is being recognized by several organizations. In fact, the Chamber recognized him the other day, the other night, at their awards banquet for Citizen of the Year, and I can't think of anybody more deserving than, for him, of that award than Jim. So not only is he a great city administrator, but he's also a wonderful citizen of Johnson, and so well-deserving of that award.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll be very brief. I echo the sentiments of those who spoke before. I appreciate the comments of patience pays off when it comes to development in the Gateway District. However, no one seemed to be patient, as we quickly turned the corner on several different developments, and I too am grateful for all the city staff thinking creatively on how we can move forward. It takes a lot of work, and a lot of behind-the-scenes meetings and conversations, and there's still more to come, we all know that. And so we are very eager to see this all fill in and fill in appropriately. So thank you all, very much.
It's important to be patient, but also nimble.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
I guess I'm going to chime in on the comments by Councilman Cope and Burkhardt, and say that I've said this before, I get a lot of comments from other city council members, that, other cities, about they're so jealous of our team and our meetings, and they'll say, oh, we never get together, we never have the pre-meetings where we discuss these things ahead of time. I'm like, oh, we do that all the time, and we have the best communication people, and so, so I love that. I love when someone is envious of our wonderful staff. Thank, so thank you.
Thank you. The only thing that I'll add is that Jim and I both attended the reception that the Kosovo consulate held on Saturday night, Friday night, as a reception for their 14th anniversary of their independence. It was a lovely event, probably had, you know, upwards of 100 people show up from around the state, because there's sister-city relationships in other communities in the state. We did, we did read a proclamation, recognizing their 14th anniversary, and that was very much appreciated as well. So it's a great relationship that we have with them, they're excited about some activities that we might have coming up in the, in the year ahead. We'll, we'll continue to work on that and keep you apprised, so. That, is there anything else to come before the council, before we go into closed session? If not, we have one more item on the agenda, and that is a closed session per Iowa Code Section 21.51J. To discuss the purchase of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected, to increase the price, the governmental body would have to pay for that property. The minutes and tape recording of a session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed.